I call to order the work session at the Out and Down the Areas Board. And now turn to meeting director, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to remind all board members and anybody that's speaking, we've had some concerns with the volume, the sound from our board meetings, and it was requested that we all speak loudly and clearly into the mic, so the viewers at home can hear it better. So anybody in the audience that speaks, make sure you come to the mic, speak into the mic, so the audience at home can hear our conversation and our topics of discussion.
There was also concern with closed captioning underneath. Again, our understanding is it's the largest speech volume.
And as Mr. Price stated, the closed captioning that is on our recorded version, not the live-streamed version of our work sessions and board meetings, there is closed captioning that it was not working properly because it could not hear, I guess, clearly enough what was being said through the closed captioning. I'm going to go directly to Mrs. Beazac, Elementary Supervisor, Federal Finals Curriculum. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Beazac? As you know, before I get to Mrs. Beazac, we did have our remote start of the school year last week. And today, I will say that the opening of school was very different than anybody was ever used to. But I think it went off pretty well with some hiccups along the way. We've been in constant communication. Our administrative teams have done videos that we have posted on our district's website. Mrs. DiMarco, who was the campus support, has been working diligently with administration, with teachers and parents to answer questions and work out all of those wrinkles to try to make it a smoother transition for all involved in the remote learning process. So, thank you to everybody and just to the board. Information is it's going fairly well. It was much better than expected. And we've had to see a lot of compliments through either emails, phone calls, or just as we see people in public, that they're pleased to start. Obviously, there have been hiccups that we've been working on and working those out. We continue to work those out and field phone calls and emails from parents. So, Mrs. Beazac, any questions for Mrs. Beazac from the board? Mrs. Beazac, anything to report?
No. We're just moving along still. I don't want to join in to get by the mic.
If you could go by the mic, please.
Just that.
To the left, to the left.
This one here?
Yes.
Just that, we are, we did get the remote learning started. There were some hiccups. It didn't help to have the first day of school, there were no phones. That posed a major issue, but we did make it through. I have to give a lot of credit to the parents. They really accommodated this whole, you know, paradigm shift in learning for their kids. The teachers did an excellent job. They're continuing to work and get better at what they're doing. They're continuing to ask questions. Right now, probably one of the biggest hurdles we have is getting acclimated to this online learning through the COLA program, our cyber program. So myself and Mr. Hutchinson will be meeting with the teachers this week. We will provide an introduction to what their responsibilities work will be as teachers of record. However, even amidst the kind of the Seneca Valley people have got inundated with a lot of school districts that have gone on board with that. And so they too are experiencing an influx of questions and a lot of schools that are in the same position that we are. So, we're all working together to make this happen. We're doing best that we can to answer the questions the parents have. Again, I think at this point, the parents know that they can email me or call me, myself being the elementary, or Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Plisco for the middle and the high school. At this point, I do have about eighty-eight students that are on cyber through the elementary program. And they range from kindergarten through fifth grade. Mr. Plisco and Mr. Hutchinson will be able to tell you what the secondary and middle school numbers are. But other than that, I'm checking the progress on those students until we get the first meeting with the teachers, as they are going to oversee the kids and their work. And they are making progress through that program. So, again, you know, we'll just get ready for our next move, which will be to decide whether or not we are going to come back and how that will look when we do return. But, parents, as you know, that you can call and ask whatever questions that you have, and we will do our best to get back. And it does help that any questions related to campus can be directed directly to Mrs. DiMarco, as she will be able to expedite the answers in a quicker fashion than myself and Mr. Hutchinson. So, with that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Beazac. Mr. Hutchinson, Secondary Supervisor, Curriculum. Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson?
Yeah, I hate to call, sorry.
How many students do we have that are cyber students?
Mr. Hutchinson, if you could come to the mic and...
Ninety-six. As of today, roughly ninety-six total, nine through twelve students.
Any other questions for Mr. Hutchinson? So, roughly ninety-six secondary?
It's high school, nine through twelve.
Okay, in middle school?
Yes, that's SUCOLA. Middle school, I got, those numbers are coming down. So, I want to say, off the top of my head, between sixty and seventy. Roughly.
So, we're a little over two hundred total, nine through twelve, with students in the whole program at this time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Special education, Mr. Plisco, any questions for Mr. Plisco?
How's the testing going, Mr. Plisco? I know we were a little bit behind.
Yeah, we were. To be honest, we actually started back up August fourth or the fifth with actually the evaluations. We had quite a few evaluations and reevaluations. I've got, each week I've been updating this for my psychologist with regards to the schedule, which means tested and not. So, we've been actually making good progress with it. Reports have been coming back pretty frequently this week and actually the previous week. So, we're making good headway on it. And actually, we're starting to get into, got finished for the year. So, we're almost cut up.
Chair, what about the revisions? Have all the revisions been done?
Yeah, we are currently getting those revisions done. Some of it's, you know, getting over parents as well. So, it's taking a little time.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Plisco? Thank you, Mr. Plisco. Food service, Mr. Golden is not here this evening. However, we do continue with five sites providing food for students. And that information is on our district's website for ordering and picking up the food at the various locations throughout the district. If you have questions, please contact Troy Golden or refer to our district's website for information for breakfast and lunch menus and serve and pickup times. Technology, Mr. Holden, any questions for Mr. Holden? Anything to report, Mr. Holden?
Just reporting, you know, things have been going well, you know, start of school. It's been, it's been great having Allison DiMarco to help out with, you know, all the campus issues and the Google issues that we've come across, as well as having the new hire, Amanda Lachlan, she started and getting her feet wet. So, things have been good.
Chris, how's the Chrome going? I know you, you told all the Chrome men at the end of the year and district backup to different people. How's that one now?
Yeah, so the Chrome books, we, our primary concern was to get a device into everybody's hands. So, you know, the devices that were all touched throughout the summer, we got to perform software updates on them. So, you've probably heard on the news, a lot of schools are experiencing Chrome shortages. There are schools and districts that don't have any Chrome books. We did, we're successful in getting our initial order in. So, we were still concerned with the numbers. So, we wanted to get a device out of everybody's hands. Some of the devices, I understand, weren't up to parents' expectations. But we, you know, we have other Chrome books that have yet to arrive. And we assure them, you know, if you're not happy with your device, once we receive or new shipment, we'll buy them to exchange it out.
I've got some phone calls and lots of people like this. Why can't kids get their same Chrome that they got from the previous year? They're getting Chrome with stickers on it and shit in it or garbage in it?
So, typically, that's what we've done every year in the past. With this year being different, we could uncollect the Chrome books in the manner that we normally did because school came to a rough stop.
Well, are their Chrome numbers, so you know which kid has it?
They are serialized underneath. And then, yes, we have record of everything they have. But because we had to collect them in a different manner, they had to be sanitized, as well as software updates. We had to physically touch each one. And then to reissue them, it just, we couldn't, we couldn't make it work. So, that's why we kind of did what we had to do. And I filled in some of those calls and emails from parents that are concerned. And we've dealt with those on a one-by-one basis, you know, with those concerns.
Chris, how many Chrome books do you expect to get in that have been ordered that haven't brought yet?
We have an order of another hundred devices due to arrive this week, actually.
Now...
We have more money coming. I just got notified. We have more money coming. I just got notified through the GERS grant. And it was the, it was the orig- it was the original equity money. And I forgot to say this earlier. It was the original equity grant that we had applied for early on in the closure. And we hadn't gotten it. And it was only the schools in, like, Eastern PA. So, they did a second round. So, we got, we're getting more money. I have to resubmit the grant. They just sent us additional correspondence. So, we're going to keep the narrative the same that it was originally, so we can at least put the order in for more Chrome books also. And some more touchscreen. And a little bit, as the teachers are getting more savvy in their use of the Canvas and the remote learning, they've been wanting some more software, some additional platforms, some of the kindergarten, some of the grade-specific platforms. So, we can funnel some of that money into that. But as far as, the only reason I'm saying is, cut against, because you asked how many. So, he only got a hundred. But we can probably get additional more in light of this new money. So, sorry.
Thank you.
Mrs. Beazac, do you expect your market need for that?
For that?
Yeah, concerns are back.
There are. I think they said some of the districts are waiting, like, until November. Some have said neighboring districts have not anticipated theirs till November. But as long as we get the first hundred and we can continue to replenish.
At this time, all of our students do have a Chrome book that functions. You know, ones that had maybe keys missing or not working properly, those people were issued about the Chrome books as functioning properly. So, as we get the new ones in and ordered and get those in as well, we will continue to offer those to students that, you know, need their Chrome books.
The elementary got brand-new ones.
Yeah, the elementary, K through five, they all have brand-new devices. The issue seem to be primarily at the middle schools.
One more question, Chris. Do seniors have the option to buy their Chrome when they graduate?
They do.
Why are we going if we don't have enough Chrome?
Well, we offered that this year, and we only had a few part taken. And we weren't, again, we weren't aware at that particular time of year, back in March or April, we were going to have an issue like this.
What are we charging if we sell that Chrome? Does it cost us more money to replace that?
No, those devices are appropriately charged. So, those devices were with those, those graduating seniors, they had those devices since they were ninth grade. So, that device was nearing the end of its life cycle. So, the price appropriated it for.
Okay, all right. Thank you. With transportation, you know, we are remote. I've had some questions and calls as to a lot of people have seen our galloping buses on the roads. But we do have, I think it's about seventeen routes that are running for our students that attend VOTech. There's eight different buses there. And we also have students that are going to community schools and we're obligated to transport. We have students that are in different placements throughout. So, there are some our galloping buses on the road. And that is because those students are attending that school physically. With transportation, I would like to, for the board to consider the purchase of a new van. Silver's are the ones that we purchased a few years ago for athletic reasons. It has saved the district a considerable amount of money since we purchased those. The silver van that we use is getting very up in mileage and has had some maintenance work. I would prefer to get a new van for transportation and take the silver van and give that to the maintenance department. Right now, the maintenance department uses, on this side of the district, they use that large box truck daily to travel the district. And I think that we're putting too many miles on that truck. And, you know, it's going to be nearing the end of its life if we continue to run it daily the way we do. And I would like to reserve that truck, just for when necessary, to deliver at home supplies and equipment throughout the district. And like I said, the silver van we've used, put that in maintenance. So, I would like you to consider that. If you're okay with that, I can look at pricing and, you know, move forward with that. So, are, are you in agreement with me to at least permit me to look into purchasing a new van? If you're in favor of that, you know, just straw vote?
I'd like to have a price of one, but...
All right, so I will get prices. We've dealt with Uniontown Ford when we purchased the other two, and they were pretty fair. So, I will continue, I will move forward with looking at pricing for those vans. I might be able to get a good deal at the end of the year. You know, maybe a leftover two thousand twenty or something. So, I will get that.
Can we get some closer things from multiple dealerships?
Sure, yes, I'll get at least three. And I'll look for the same type van that's attended action. Athletics, Mr. Dupont is at the high school with a volleyball game this evening. Now, as you know, Friday night's football game, we, it was our first game of the year. We did have a victory over our rival, Laura Highlands, thirty-two to nothing. So, it was a great night for the Out and Down Football Team. Unfortunately, with the governor's restrictions on attendance, we were limited to only giving tickets to the parents of the football team and cheerleaders. Unless those, that number of two hundred and fifty total is changed, it will continue to be that way for outdoor sports where that two hundred and fifty, that includes players, coaches, trainers, officials, and the like. You know, so we're very limited if we did not and are not able to issue tickets to the visiting team. However, we are live-streaming the games with AGTV and making that available to parents. We also had, I believe, Friday night, WBS and Slum and News Corp was there filming the game as well.
Mr. Beck, do you have something?
Yes, Mr. Price.
Earlier today, the federal district judge out of the Western District of Pennsylvania ruled that the cap of two hundred and fifty for outdoor gatherings was unconstitutional. Don't get your hopes up if you are in favor of increasing attendance, because that's likely to appeal again within the next couple of days. But at least it's a sign of something that may be changed.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And we will keep the board as well as the community up to date if there are changes for the number of people that can attend events. The indoor events is twenty-five total.
And that also may be subject to law. Well, it was also a little unconstitutional. We won't wait to see what happens in the next few days.
And if that changes, we will update the public as well. As of right now, tonight, it is just the players, the coaches, and the officials that are permitted to stay at the gymnasium. So, hopefully that does change it and permit people to attend those and watch their children play.
Mr. Beck, the AG Sports Network did a great job of streaming that game. It was, they did a fantastic job.
Thank you. Maintenance, I do have Janine Benucci here to speak to the board in regards to the, I believe, the parking lots. Was there anything else from Janine? Okay, Mr. Benucci.
I guess I'm just here to answer questions. The contractor's completed, the work, the punch list was completed this past week. It'll be one out to the contractor, Flino, to finish up his punch list items. He has not submitted an application for payment this month. The only outstanding issue would be the sidewalk change order that they submitted for the Smithville Elementary School. And they had submitted that change order last month. I believe, and you guys wanted us to get additional quotes. We're having trouble getting somebody to quote that. We haven't received one price yet. So, we've given it to three different contractors in the area. I think, you know, there's a long time. And it's just not on their radar to get that, that scope done. I mean, you could potentially still award it to Flino. I can tell you, the way we bid the original scope, we had breakdowns for the dumpster pads in each school, playgrounds in each school. So, we didn't collect unit costs at that time. But we know the square footage of all those areas and we know what they cost. You know, and they bid us straight across the board each school saying price. And their change order was right in line with their original bid. So, we didn't have any issue with the cost of that change order. But I think, you know, since the bidders we've given to solicit quotes, the three, we haven't gotten a quote yet. I mean, the only other thing we could do is advertise it and put it out for bid again, if you wanted to do that with that sidewalk.
Well, with time being of the essence, and you haven't received one quote, you know, I would like the board to consider awarding that to Flino. That's still a possibility. Because with us possibly bringing students back to school and having buses be drop-off, you know, that is essential that we have the sidewalk there, to use the simple corner entry so the students can be dropped off and not like we did last year. So, would the board consider straw vote and awarding the market Flino?
What was the price on that?
I think it was in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand. It was thirty-five thousand and some change.
And this included not just the sidewalk, but putting a hole through the, with the archway to the sidewalk building?
Correct. And I think there was a good number, like fifteen new directional signs.
Mr. Price, what's that? Because the archway is clearly a separate project. What did you give it?
The archway of the sidewalk, we're estimating it committed by thirty-five thousand. And that's, that's over the bid amount. We don't even have anybody on PEP or any of the intergovernmental cooperation agreements?
No, I haven't really checked into that. What do you mean it was over the bid amount? I mean, the archway contract price was like one hundred thousand.
Over twenty thousand has to be bid, meaning out of product.
Right, but you can do a change order to a contract that's already been put in.
Yeah, I did that, but I had trouble setting how that fit into anything remotely with this job.
Well, actually, the only thing that didn't is, I mean, we had signage on the jobs because we replaced a lot of ADA signage. We had paving on the jobs, and we did new sidewalks on the jobs. So, everything, we also did seating and lawn repair. So, all of that would have been in their original bid scope, which we can quantify and verify the price. The only thing that is, is that mason reopening in the wall. And I think, I mean, even if you wanted to do that, we could, we could separate, ask them to separate that price out and get three quotes to make the mason reopening. It's basically a steel beam and a little bit of masoning work is all that's happening there.
Do we even have to, the mason reopening wall?
Yeah, yeah, you really do. I mean, you'd have to demolish that whole wall with, you know, the roofs in, only that white wall that shifts out there. I do kind of, the easiest and cheapest way to do it is to make a hole.
I, you know, I, it still sounds like a different condition.
Well, would it be feasible to award them the job for the sidewalk and everything else? And then, as she said, do the doorway separate? Get three quotes for just the mason reopening for the doorway? At least get the sidewalk in where kids are going to walk as they get dropped off up to the main entrance.
I think part of the issue is, you know, we've got the Vintsey concrete and Scott Yard in Brownsville and Kishno who did the stairs and the door. And I think that mason reopening is a little bit out of their scope of what they normally do. And so, they, you know, don't really, maybe that's part of the reason they're not giving us a price, because they don't want to sub that out to somebody that's not committed normally.
Let's get the sidewalk done anyway.
Mr. Beck, how much does the additional metal detector? Just curious, aren't we doing all this because of the entrance doesn't have an additional metal, like the main entrance to seal the metal detector?
You do want an additional one-point entry? If we did buy another metal detector, that doorway where they could man or walking through the, right by the kitchen and freezer, there's a lot of traffic in that hallway from the kitchen. Yes, not really ideal for them to go in that entrance every morning. I do think it would, and plus, you'd have to hire another person to man the metal detector, which, without being a significant cost, you're looking at, you know, price fifteen, twenty thousand a year for a person to stand at that door. So, so we can have on the agenda to do the sidewalk and just not do the doorway. And we can try to get three quotes for just the mason reopening.
Well, what's that called around the sidewalk? Money-wise?
Well, I would think the signs, they had the signs broken out, and that was four point something, four thousand dollars, a little over four thousand dollars or something. So, and there was, like, some things we went back and forth about there. So, gravel there that we were originally going to keep. And then somebody told them to remove it. But if we remove it, then we have to plant grass there. So, we ended up keeping it there. So, I think probably, you know, we're probably thirty, twenty-six of the sidewalk. Probably one twenty-six. I'm thinking the mason reopening, you know, with the beam and the openings, probably two thousand five hundred in that ballpark. It's a seven-foot wide by eight-foot opening.
So, you're saying, you know, with the steel beam, most of this job is sidewalk?
Yes, yeah, sidewalk and signage. And we had both in the original contract.
Can you detail the signage, please? That's four thousand dollars for signage.
Yeah, there's a lot of signage. See, the problem with that site is, we walked through in our original walk-through, and we, you know, we were told right up front there's a bus drop-off issue here. But the problem is, none of those roadways were wide enough to accommodate buses and traffic passing each other, the correct zoning requirements for parking. And so, if you were going to change it in any way, you really needed to do new paving up there, a whole new bus loop, a whole new... So, it would have required a land development plan and things to go before the county. It was just not in the scope of the time that we had to get it out for bid. And there was no way to make that thing comply. You know, in Friendship Hill, we provide open space. We can make that comply without having to get any site surveys done or anything like that. But at that site, it's just difficult because nothing there really is compliant as it is. And if you change it, you have to bring it up to the current code. And so, it really needs to stay the way that it is. And this just needs to be a repair to what you have, so that, you know, you don't have to make the whole thing comply. Because that's how the code reads. so that, you know, you don't have to make the whole thing comply, because that's how the code reads. So, um... I got off topic.
So, so how much signage?
Oh, the signage, so the signage is directing the, um, buses, which way to go. I guess they're going to drop off the parents in a different location, um, and pick up, they're going to drop them off on the side by the, um, end of the school and make them walk up that sidewalk to the front door in the morning. But for pickup, they're going to drive around for the group, because the kids have to be called out to come to the car, and there's not that much interference with the buses at that point. So all that directional signage does is talk about how to do that.
If it's possible, I think we ought to just get it done for thirty-five thousand. If we do, do the paving for thirty, and we can add other bid, it's going to be much more than that for the money.
How high is the sidewalk going to be? Because in a minor collection of Smithville from the areas that you're describing, you can't be more than forty feet. The idea that sidewalks for forty feet length could be twenty-seven thousand dollars just blows my mind away. I mean, my husband does masonry, I mean, that they're, I mean, so I mean, unless you're talking about these sidewalks are twenty feet wide, I mean, that just blows my mind that we could be talking about that much money for a forty-foot sidewalk.
It's longer than forty feet, it's a good bit longer than forty feet, but it's, um, the way that...
Wait, so just so I'm clear, you're talking about the end of the school, where, where, so years ago, we dropped off students to where, where they drop off or the buses drop off? You're saying that's in one forty feet?
What they're doing is, the, the way that you used to drop off at the building was up along the back road, and they drop off with the grass. And so what we're going to do is we're going to put a curb there so that there's a wheel stop for safety for the students when they're getting out of the car. There's no way a car can go up on the, on the sidewalk and hit anybody. So there's probably, I don't know, I'd say thirty feet of sidewalk right there, but then there's going to be a new sidewalk that goes all the way to the front entrance along the front of that building. So that they get off the, out of the car at that end, and then walk to the front of the buildings.
So, I mean, so you're talking from where the doors, the cafeteria in front of the building, can't be more than ten feet, fifteen feet?
No, the main entrance is good.
But the, you have, the, the main entrance, I mean, they can't be more than forty feet from where you turn in the road and to where the, where the cafeteria is to the main entrance?
Yeah, there's several classrooms there, and the classrooms are thirty-four feet. I mean, it's probably a hundred feet or more from, from the main entrance past all the classrooms to, to the edge of the building there. There's a good bit of concrete there, and I can give you the square footage, and like, you know what the price is for square foot, but I calculated it when, I didn't bring that with me, but I calculated that when they put in the change order, and they were right in line with the price they gave us for the dumpster pads.
I, I want to see the, the pickup, the drop off, the safest way that it can be, but I also think that we need to abide by the law. If that archway is a separate project that requires to be bid, then that's the way that I think we can do it. I mean, that's the way the law says we have to do it, so, yeah.
Well, if you, if you look at it, quite frankly, I was assuming the archway is because it's space.
Oh, no, that's the smallest part.
Or the same sidewalk. The archway could be, well, within limits of not even having...